All right, so we'll call to order this remote meeting of the Westboro School Committee. Thank you for joining us this evening. At this remote livestream school committee meeting, due to the impacts of COVID-19 virus, some aspects of the open meeting law have been suspended. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather one place, this meeting of the Westboro School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. Town officials on Westboro TV have worked together to hold this meeting via televideoconference and broadcasted as such on Westboro TV's government channels, Verizon 28 and Charter 192, and streamed online at westborotv.org/live-stream-government backslash for persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress. And the votes we take this evening will be roll call votes due to remote participation. Thank you to Westboro TV for covering the broadcast this evening. Tonight, we have with us Superintendent Amber Bach, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Daniel Meyer, Director of Finance Administration Irene Oliver, Sarah Delay, Chair, Westboro School Committee, Steve Dorrett, Vice Chair of the Westboro School Committee, School Committee Members Lisa Edinburgh, Raghu Nandan, and Kristin Vincent. We also have Jen Benton, our School Committee Recording Secretary, staff from Westboro TV handling the livestream of this meeting, and Johanna DeCarlo, our Athletics Director, will be joining us for an update on the high school turf. Our agenda this evening is as follows: We'll do reorganization of the school committee. We'll do school committee appointments. We'll approve minutes from May 27, the regular session. We'll do the superintendent's report. We'll hear from the Assistant Superintendent, the Director of Finance Administration reports. We'll hear school committee member reports. We'll have a building project update. We'll take any citizens' requests. We'll have a distance learning update. We'll have a school committee resolution on COVID-19 funding and the cost of reopening. We have the high school turf field update on the warranty issues. We have a kindergarten tuition discussion, a budget update and vote, a discussion of town meeting. We'll vote on the Student Opportunity Act form. We'll have the superintendent's review, the Asa Valley Collaborative Fourth Quarter Update, and this discussion of the management of delayed agenda items and reports. And we do have a need for an executive session this evening. Due to the remote format, we will be taking any citizens' requests by email. Please email the committee with your comments at school-committee@westboroktwelve.org. Thank you. Okay. So we will move into our first item. It's the reorganization of the school committee. We typically reorganize and elect a new chair after the local election, but with the COVID-19, that has been postponed. So this being our last regularly scheduled meeting of the school year, we felt it was appropriate to make the transition at this meeting. So I would call for a motion to nominate a school committee chairperson.
I make a motion to nominate Kristin Vincent as chairperson of the school committee.
Thank you. Was it a second to the motion? Steve, are you there? Steve, is Steve there?
He's muted. He's muted. Okay, now I second the motion.
And then Raghu, were you able to join us? Oh, I thought I saw, okay.
Yeah, I think he is here, but he needs to unmute.
Okay. So we'll call for a roll call votes. We have Lisa.
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve?
Dorrett, yes.
Delay, yes. Raghu, are you there? Yeah, I'm ready to get. And Kristin, I think you get to vote for yourself, so you can...
Vincent, yes.
Okay, so that's four zero, Raghu being absent for the moment. Can I get a motion for a nomination of a vice chair?
I'll make a motion to nominate Steve Dorrett as vice chair.
Great, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And then we'll do another call vote. I'll start with Lisa again.
Edinburgh, yes.
Kristin?
Vincent, yes.
Steve?
He was muted again because of background noise.
Okay. I'll go, yes, that's fine. So then Steve, if you're there?
Dorrett, yes.
Great, thank you. So that's four zero, again Raghu being absent. So we have a new, congratulations, Kristin Vincent, for being the school committee chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for your trust in me as the new chair of the school committee. And I look forward to the time when I can literally sit in the chair that is reserved for the chair of the school committee and that we can all work together face to face in the same room again. And I look forward to working closely with Amber and supporting all the work that we do in our school. So thank you so much. And I just want to say thank you to Sarah for leading our school committee as chair for the last two-plus years. Sarah, your term as chair was unexpectedly extended since town elections were postponed. And I really appreciate, I know we all appreciate, that you stayed on as chair during the school shutdown. And you have, during your time as chair, you've led this committee through so many major changes and growth in our school district. Your work on Rangers on Track is commendable. We wouldn't have those new fields without you. Your work on the Turkey Trot, you helped open the Borough Program and the Sugar Shack, you helped expand Armstrong renovations at Hastings and Gibbons, a new early childhood building, and we're starting a new Fails building. I mean, I'm exhausted just thinking about it. Thank you so, so much for everything you've done.
Thank you. Certainly not alone in any of those tasks. We're all here, and I'm not going anywhere, so we're good.
I know.
But we need you. Thank you. And Steve, thank you for, you know, remaining in your role as vice chair. You're like a steady grounding member there, and we appreciate all your dedication to Westboro and to the school district, so thank you.
Thanks for your thoughts.
You're on the first agenda item.
Yay. So I have to say thank you so much, Sarah. And, you know, Kristin, it's not an easy position to step into. So, you know, Sarah did, and there's, you know, an astounding job in her position, and I expect that you're going to do the same. And I, it's not, you know, we don't pay you, and, and this is a job that you do and you volunteer, and I know that it's something out of your life that you dedicate, and you do a commendable job, and I appreciate both of you for this. And so, you know, I, I just, you know, especially during these times, it, it gets challenging. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Irene. Thank you so much. And I'm definitely going to be relying on everyone's support as I learn what to do in this new role, so thank you. Thanks. So now that I'm chair, I get to take over this meeting, but Sarah is here to help me figure out what I'm supposed to do. So the next item on our agenda are our school committee appointments. And as school committee members, we sit on a variety of committees and subcommittees. And as we have an election and new people come on, or as we, you know, reappoint people to different positions, we need to rotate some committee appointments. So we're gonna go ahead and move through those now. And I think either Amber or Daniel, you'll keep track of those in the, in the spreadsheet. We have like a big subcommittee appointments document that we keep track of. So the first one is the Sick Leave Bank Committee. That's one that I've been serving on with Lisa, and so I'm gonna come off of that, and we're gonna put Sarah onto that committee. The next one is a Joint Labor Management Committee, and Sarah has been sitting on that, so Sarah's gonna come off, and I'm gonna come onto that. And Lisa is also a member of that committee. The next one is the Policy Subcommittee. Sarah's gonna come off, and I'm gonna come on, because traditionally, it's always the chair and the vice chair on that committee. Supervision and Evaluation Committee, I'm gonna come off of that, and Raghu is gonna become the, the school committee member to that committee, so that'll be a nice addition for him to join that committee. And we, oh, and I can come off the Hoco-Monco Pond Committee, and we're gonna put Sarah on that. Not much happens with that one, so. And then we're gonna take two committees, and we're going to move them, we're gonna archive them. So the data dashboard is one that Lisa has been working really hard on, so we're gonna move that and archive that one. And the kindergarten subcommittee was one that I was sitting on, and we're finished with that, so we're gonna archive that one as well. Any comments, discussion, questions?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Hello.
That's Raghu.
Thanks, Sarah, for all your services, and congratulations, Kristin.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't there for, for the old.
And another sort of new appointment or reorganization we're gonna do is that I need a motion. Traditionally, Sarah has been the one signing payroll, and we need a motion to change that, so I'll become the person signing payroll. So I need a motion for that.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to have Kristin begin signing the payroll for the school committee.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any further discussion about that? All right, we'll take a roll call vote for that. Sarah?
Delay, yes.
Okay, Raghu?
Raghu, yes.
Okay, Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve?
Dorrett, yes.
All right, and I'll vote for myself. Vincent, yes. And then we will keep Sarah on as someone who will continue to sign bills. And as we always do, if one of us can't get there to do that work, we just appoint somebody else on the school committee to do that. But Sarah will continue with that responsibility. Okay, I need a motion to approve minutes from May 27, 2020, our regular session.
We'll move the minutes of May 27, regular session.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second for that?
I can second the minutes from May 27.
Okay, and so we'll do a roll call vote for that. Sarah?
Delay, yes.
Raghu?
Raghu, yes.
Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve?
Dorrett, yes.
And myself, Vincent, yes. All right, moving right along, we're gonna move into our reports, and so we're gonna hear from our superintendent.
Thank you very much. First of all, Sarah, you know how much I have to thank you, so I'll talk with you later and say thank you more. And Kristin, welcome. As a well-oiled school committee machine, you guys are a very, very strong performing committee, so I have complete confidence of a seamless transition, so thank you. And it's exciting to both have Sarah still here, Steve in the vice, and everybody rolling around here at a new position, so Kristin will be seeing a lot of each other. It'll be nice. So I have several highlights and reflections tonight, certainly cogs in on the fact, though, that we're trying to stay on time, so everybody keep us on point. I want to recognize that the graduation celebration this week was just a spectacular highlight of a community effort. I want to speak to the fact that the students, parents, faculty, and town collaborated at a deep and fun and enjoyable and thoughtful level to create an experience, not just for our seniors, but for their families, for the faculty, and for the community. I want to thank the Spirit Committee, Roberta Brown, who just pulled out her long-working memory on having done the 300th parade and really stepped up to collaborate. It was really fun to watch Brian on his phone with her and her queuing the parade up, and just the amount of really thoughtful celebration that took place, the police department and fire departments, who were there for all the supportive coordination, and just everybody who turned out, just for me, a real, real celebration. The Memory Lane Night with the baccalaureate, you know, I was there with Johanna and the whole team. It was absolutely beautiful, spectacular. And Joe and I were talking about it, because we were just saying that, in some ways, it was really just so wonderful to have one-to-one moments with families as they walked by, to be able to speak with each of them personally across the span of the night, and then the next day, to speak to each car as it came through with their family and the parade and the student. It was, for me, a lot of personal contact to make, you know, individual comments, and it was just really enjoyable. And of course, we will then hope to welcome them to the Green August 1, socially-distanced for, for a real diploma awarding. So we're really excited. Just want to commend the immense amount of planning effort. Secretarial and admin team at the high school were spot-on, just a really amazing effort. So thank you to everybody. I want to recognize as well in my reflections that that was just juxtaposed, that amount of joy and celebration was juxtaposed against the continual sense of emotional pain and turmoil that we're facing as a nation around the murder of George Floyd, and the reaction that's taking place across our nation. And I think that I was able to attend the vigil on Sunday held by our community. It was well-attended. I know many... held by our community. It was well-attended. I know many of you were there. It was poignant. It was moving. It was hopeful for me to see the messaging and the sense of turnout and the commitment that I believe this community does share to listening more deeply and, and thinking even more extensively about our next steps and the growth of our identity as a community of equity. And I think certainly, as the superintendent of this district, I want to comment that we, like the nation, are continuing to reflect and to grow, and that I feel we have done much good work that looks at diversity and equity and the recognition of all of us needing to be able to look within and then think about our collective district role and our individual roles. And I think that there, while I feel good about the work that we've mapped out and much that we've done, there's much more to do. And I want to recognize that, you know, the strategic plan we mapped out had many, many good first starts. There are good ideas surfacing for how we enhance and grow those after we finish our listening and reflecting. And I just want to comment tonight to both the school committee and to our community that we welcome that work, we embrace that work. We're not afraid of the hard work it takes to, to listen and to step up. And so, I think when we serve everyone, we all grow. And I think that as we listen to our people around us of color, we will all come out better. So, I just want to thank the community for the first steps it's taken. And it's energizing to me to see the conversation continue to grow. So, certainly, as your superintendent, I welcome the work ahead, and I know that you'll be there with me. So, those are my comments for tonight.
All right. Daniel?
The only thing I'll give in the way of an update, I guess, is to echo Amber's reflections on the current situation in our country in terms of how much we've been affected by it and, and the reflecting that we're doing as educators about where we've come from over the last few years and why we're proud of the, you know, way in which we've diversified our calendar to be more sensitive to ethnic diversity. And we've put professional development in place for our faculty to work on issues of cultural proficiency and identity. And all new faculty are, you know, given some opportunities to reflect on what it means to teach a diverse population. We collectively agree that we need to really look at our curriculum and do a in-depth analysis of where we are strong and where we are weak when it comes to issues of cultural competency, anti-bias work, inclusivity. And we know that we address those themes at various points, but we don't, we haven't done a systematic review of that. And, and we think the time is really, you know, now for, for making sure that we're on point with our kids about those issues. And so, to begin with, we've charged our social-emotional learning leaders. We have, you know, Kim Tyne and Roger Anderson, who work with our kids on issues of identity. That's social-emotional learning is identity of self, relationship to others, and how we deal with our cultural identity and bias issues needs to be a part of that social-emotional learning curriculum. And so, they are taking an active role of presenting to all of the leadership team what we do currently and how we can improve it. In addition to that, we're looking at our social studies curriculum. And we're, we're at the tail end of a review of our curriculum. But we've now said, given recent events, that we need to go back and, and reanalyze our review and four pieces about cultural identity and how we may or may not be doing well by our children in terms of focusing on issues of inclusivity. So, you know, we're open to feedback. We will be talking, obviously, a lot about this in the coming months. I think everybody's deeply moved by what's happening in, in, in the country. And so, it's, it's front and center in our thinking right now. That's it.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah. A lot, a lot of, a lot of work, but really good work to do. Irene, do you have anything to share right now? I know you'll be sharing.
I know. There's a, there's a lot of activity with year-end events, but it's all behind the scenes. So, I'm not going to bore you with the minutia of it all, but, so that's it.
Thanks. And I know we'll hear from you later, probably with budget things.
Yes.
Okay. So, we can move into some school committee member reports. So, we'll start with Sarah.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for their compliments on my, my chairship. I'm happy to turn it over. Like I said, I'm not going anywhere. So, I'm, I'm always around. You can find me. I would also like to thank the organizers of the Anti-Racism Solidarity Vigil for bringing such a moving experience to Westboro. It was a call to action. Personally, I would like to learn and listen and find out what I don't know. The speakers were all inspiring, especially the young people that really spoke from the heart. If you didn't get a chance to see the vigil or hear any of the speakers, you should definitely tune into Westboro TV. It's an easy 45-minute watch, and it's, it's very special. So, it's quite motivating and powerful. And as a community, we can always do better, and especially when we work together. So, just echo what everyone, what Amber and Daniel have already said, we'll, we'll join the conversation. So, thank you. This past weekend, the seniors were recognized, as Amber said. Lots of new traditions. Everyone wants to keep, keep everything that we did this weekend. I know it was a lot of work for everyone. I also got compliments on, I didn't get compliments, compliments to the high school administrators and teachers and everything about how festive it was down at the high school itself. A lot of people didn't see that, and how well-organized it was getting everyone's stuff back and lined up and things like that. So, it was just a well, well-run machine as usual. So, thank you, everyone, for putting on a, on a good show for the town. Many more parades and events to come this week. I know we have stuff for eighth graders, sixth graders, third graders. So, keep, you know, keep honking the horns and keep outside on the streets, because there's more action coming this week. So, thank you.
Yeah, definitely a busy few days to wind down the end of the school year, for sure. Raghu, do you have anything to share tonight?
No, at this point, nothing, Kristin. Thanks. Although I echo the sentiments from Amber and David and Daniel and Ralfet. And I hope one day we come to a point where we all can pull each other forward irrespective of race or religion or creed, so that we can pull the nation forward together. That's, that's all, that's what I think. I hope to see that one day sometime.
Thank you. I think we can all agree with that. Lisa, do you have anything?
I think that's all our sentiments, right?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Irene. Lisa?
It is my hope, it is with hope and humility that I speak briefly tonight regarding the insidious brutality and violence Black people have endured in America that result from systemic racism. Importantly, Black lives matter. Systemic racism inhabits our nation, our town, our schools, and stirs relentlessly within the ingrained white privilege of neighborhoods and within myself. If you are listening and turn a deaf ear, then some introspection, reading, conversation, plus compassion may be required. As I reflect and embrace forgiveness and courage to change my own failings, I cannot sit idly in the seat on the school committee without engagement. Our school system self-examines its culture regularly, as Daniel had mentioned and Amber had mentioned, and has thoughtfully completed some work to eradicate racism. Charged as a school committee member, I will oversee policy changes as needed. I am confident and have faith that the superintendent, her leadership team, and staff will examine our current practices, create solutions, and do whatever is necessary to alter our culture. Westboro Public Schools' learning philosophy emphasizes an inclusion model and builds an inclusive culture. It is not a strong reach to emphasize anti-racist practices as well, which I recognize will continue. We must establish an anti-racist community through earnestly educating ourselves, having challenging conversations, and altering the narrative from shame to personal growth. Unfortunately, some truths are not as self-evident as they ought to be. Coming together at Sunday's vigil was a powerful gathering that gives me hope and predicts a promising future. Now that I know better, I promise to do better. Now that I see better, I visualize what needs to change. We will rise together for a brighter, equitable tomorrow. And in other reports, besides what Amber mentioned for seniors, I wanted to just give a shout-out to Jen McGrath, who created the Adopting the Senior Program, which was really fabulous. And if you hadn't watched, Mr. WHS was absolutely incredibly funny and fun to watch. There was also, the academic awards happened this past week as well, last week. The Westboro High School Faculty Lip Sync, if you missed it, you can still see it on your YouTube Westboro High School channel. And the lawn signs that the class of 2020, that were delivered to each of their homes with a bag of goodies. I wanted to thank the local businesses who donated. That was extraordinary. Also, if you haven't been paying attention, Mr. Roger Anderson had sent out a Family Field Day, a list of activities that were really amazing. We still plan to do our hike to Purgatory Chasm with his map. But, yeah, it's still out there. And finally, there is a local election at Town Hall on June 13 from 10 to 2. I suggest you, well, definitely, wear a face mask and, you know, feel free to do your civic duty. I just wanted to mention that Raghu and I are up for election on the school committee. And of course, we request your support. And that is all. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Thanks for the reminder about the town elections. I know there'll be practicing social, social distancing while you're waiting in line to do your civic duty. So, we encourage people to come out. And thanks for all those additional updates. A senior week was so full of amazing activities, and there was just one after another. It was just really, really great. Steve, do you have anything to add, other than your building project updates? Because I know you're on the schedule for that, too.
Yeah, I just want to comment. I, I think the, the school committee has outlined pretty much what our interest and future is, has been, and will be. I, I just want to comment on, on the process in terms of issues associated with racism. And, and that process now is to stay vigilant and to realize that true change has to happen legislatively and retrospectively in everybody's mind. I think those of us who watched what happened in Minneapolis truly saw what can happen if we don't control all aspects of city government, state government, and for that matter, the nation. We've gone through similar problems that could be very dangerous to the country. And so, it's, it's with dire consequences if we don't do it well. And I think all of us who have concerns, and all those who are listening or watching this on Westboro TV, need to think about this and figure out how we all can be effective to, to execute change. So, those are my thoughts on the subject, too.
Thank you, Steve. Really important points to think about locally, but also globally. And, and just really think about those big ideas and, and what we want to see happen. And legislation and elections are a way to, to bring that about. And I have just some, a few comments to make, too. I attended the Anti-Racism Vigil on Sunday, and I was really, really moved by listening to faith leaders and elected officials and young people speak about racism and read poetry. And I listened carefully to the speakers who called upon elected officials to take action and respond to injustice in our own communities. You were speaking to me. I'm one of those elected officials, and I just wanted to say that I heard you. And I want to personally commit, as an elected official here in Westboro, to expand my own capacity to listen and understand the experiences of our Black and Brown faculty members and students, and to help lift their voices, to help inform all of us. We'll continue to examine our policies and practices at all levels with the goal of being able to have staff, students, and families interact even more effectively with empathy and understanding in our ever-growing, culturally diverse, and amazing community here in Westboro. So, thank you to the organizers of that event and everyone who spoke and everyone who reached out online and in person afterwards, just to hear all of the opinions and comments and feelings that people had after that event. I think events like that are a really great way to get something going and get the conversation started right here at home. So, thank you to everyone for that. And as Sarah and Lisa mentioned, lots of events coming up between now and the last day of school. So, lots of online things going on with the ways that kids will say goodbye to each other and goodbye to their teachers, and a lot of reverse parades and parades. And so, really just a, a really wonderful collection of end-of-the-year activities in a time when I think it's gonna be really hard to say goodbye. So, I appreciate all the creativity to be able to bring this school year to a close. Okay. So, we're gonna move on to our building project updates. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve, because he has all the info on that.
Well, for those of you who drive by Fail School every day, and I know Amber does, because she said so, and I do most every day, the piles of dirt are getting bigger. The concrete efforts have started. Many things will start to appear coming out of the ground. You know, the construction in and of itself is never simple, and there's always impacts. And we've dealt with those impacts on the neighborhood as they come, come up. And the construction team has, has cooperated in every way that we can in order to minimize impacts to the neighborhood and basically for the rest of the town as well. And so, because the school has been, in effect, adjourned, if you will, for the year, we got a two-month start on construction. Things are moving along. The schedules are looking pretty good. One of the issues, of course, to be considered are the impacts of COVID-19 and the availability of, of various things that we need. The structural steel for the project is being fabricated in Quebec. And so, one of the issues that we're wondering about is, when they put it on a truck to ship it south, what's gonna happen? Clearly, that's one of the critical things to move forward. So, the, the project is doing quite well. There are a number of bid packages to complete. And, and as a result of, of that, the true outcome of the project in terms of, you know, how well we do against the budget is still outstanding. But there are a couple of different ways that we'll be able to hold the budget, depending upon the consequences of the results of the bid. So, that segues into another point that I've talked about in previous meetings. And that is the sprinkler bidding for Hastings. As a result of, of the town meeting vote, which is now a year and a half ago, a certain amount of money was raised for the execution of the sprinkler project for Hastings. We have bid the project twice. The most recent bid came in last week. It was still over budget, but it was a couple of hundred thousand dollars less than the first time around. But because it is over budget, and we can't award a project if we don't have enough money, and so, we will have to pass over that opportunity, our earliest opportunity to, in effect, discuss it, would be at the fall town meeting, since the warrant for this current one is already closed. So, that's an unfortunate part, I think, of the COVID problem. We only had one bidder. And, and the fact that the COVID-19 environment, in some ways, has increased the cost of certain work, certain other big work that we already discussed at prior meetings for fails, came in substantially under budget. So, it's a roller coaster in terms of what the final outcome will be for, for fails. But the project team, the project construction people, and the building committee are cognizant of the times and the impact of spending money. And we will do everything that we can in order to maintain the budget that the town meeting has voted for us. So that's my update.
Thank you, Steve. A lot of important information there. And I do encourage anyone to go drive by Fails or take a walk on over there to the Eli Whitney Street. And it's pretty amazing what's happening. Fails is still standing, but there's a lot going on all around it.
One thing I forgot to mention is that the walkway from the top of the hill to the street will be available for the public again probably sometime next week when they move the fence. So that, at least that part is returned to the town for its use. And that's a great vantage point for anybody that wants to do that walk, to have a look, see in the hole and what's going on with the construction of the building.
Yeah, that would be a great view. Yeah, thanks for that update. That's good to know. And yeah, if you ever spent some time on that playground down in that lower field, just go take a look at what's there now. It's pretty incredible. All right, thank you, Steve, and a lot for us to keep our eyes on as we consider moving forward with these projects and looking at the budget impacts and the impacts that COVID-19 is having on shipping and manufacturing. So thank you for all that. We do citizens' requests now via email and we hadn't received any by the time this meeting started. So we just want to encourage everyone, if you have citizens' requests, you are welcome to email us at our school committee email. And we will read your statements or you could request to join our meeting via this Google meets platform and share your comments. We will continue with our agenda with a distance learning update. And I'll turn it over to Amber and Daniel for that.
Thank you very much. So we're right on time. So I only have one particular highlight tonight. I think the celebrations of closure that you've been sharing really capture the essence of where much of our energy has been focused over the last 10 days since we last saw each other. And so to see those come to fruition where you're pleased with how they're going and you see more to come feels good. I just want to emphasize the amount of really on-the-ground planning that it takes for all those events to do, just because they're all modifications of the essence of, you know, what we're normally rolling out. The only update that I have tonight around the distance learning is really to just mention without a call for action on your part, an update that I want you to be aware of if you get asked, which is we're looking at Community Education's Summer Camp Day Program that they run that offers extended day through 6 o'clock. And with the move of the governor to Phase Two, they just released this week guidelines for summer camps, day camps to open. A lot of communities have opted not to take on the complexities that that presents. For many, it's too extensive a financial risk or they don't have the way to meet the parameters. We are, we have been pre-planning to work with community ed to understand what their needs would be. Brian Bacon, the head of that program, has been very proactive to reach out to me and to work forward on planning with Irene around ways that we would need to support that program should it happen. We will, right now, we are really, I would say, about 75 to 80% sure that we're going to try to run programming. We have let families preliminarily sign up, indicating to us if they would have an interest, if we would open under certain circumstances, and people have said yes. So I want to be clear that for me, facing the challenges of supporting community ed, to do that is focused on the fact that families need to return to work. There are places where families need support. And the Extended Day Program has hundreds of students that are with us every day after school. That's the clientele that rolls into summer programming. And those families have long used community ed for their summer daycare and support while they are at work. I feel very motivated by the responsibility that comes with that. And it gives us an opportunity as a district to work with community ed to meet the requirements with the Board of Health, to see that they could run programming and that we could then also get a look at the parameters of what it takes to return students in some numbers on site. And so I'll be keeping you updated via email and we can come together and discuss it. Or you can call me if you have questions. I think over the next, you know, five days, finalization of that will take place and we'll need to kind of commit to which direction we're going in. I think, I feel good about where we are, but we need some real granular kind of conversations to finalize those decisions. So I feel good about that. I think it gives us a preview of how families are feeling about sending their students back into groups. And so it'll give us some snapshots of what fall challenges and celebrations might look like. And I think Daniel and I embraced that as an opportunity to get a look at that. So that's really the major update and the new, new core focus of work for us over the next two weeks. They would have normally started that programming the Monday after school closed. They delayed the three weeks until the Monday after the Fourth of July week so that they've got a longer window for preparation and readiness. And I think then we'll be able to provide some stable programming. So that's the goal. And that's it for major updates on distance learning tonight. And Daniel, do you want to highlight anything currently around where we are?
Yeah, I have a few things. I mean, first, as you know, we're waiting for the commissioner and the State Department of Education to give us guidance in terms of what next fall should look like in terms of scheduling. And we are anticipating right now, from what we're hearing, that we're going to have an A week and a B week, where half the kids come one week and the other half come the second week. So we're just, you know, keeping our, you know, lots of discussions going on about what that might look like in terms of curriculum. Before I touch on the curriculum, I guess I want to mention one thing that incoming kindergarten parents would be interested in. Usually, we do screening of kindergarteners before school lets out in the spring. But this year, because of the current circumstances, we weren't able to do it. But we are planning in July to do kindergarten screening. And so we're putting into protocols into place and we're going to be reaching out to families soon to let them know that we need to bring them in. It's very important for us to do screenings so that we can make, you know, assign kids to classes and make sure we have appropriate resources for kids who are coming in either with learning issues or English as a second language. But as far as preparing for the fall, I mean, there's a couple of things that are important that I want to make sure you know that are on our radar. One, at the K6 level, we're looking at a couple of very robust literacy and numeracy platforms for kids to be able to have that are... Basically, there's one program called Zern that works with our math program. And it keeps a profile of the kids and where they're, how they're doing. And they can work at home. So on the B week, if they're not in school and they're doing work on math, they're working on some assignments that gives information back to the teacher and can view how they're progressing. And keeps, so a teacher can keep a, basically a grid of performance on how those kids are doing. And their individual assignments are tailored to their learning level. So Zern does that for mathematics. And we're looking at Lexia, which is another robust tool for literacy. And these are unanticipated costs, but we think that they're, you know, critically important for the kids that we are like looking at and making an assessment as to whether to put them in place. But so I just want you to know that, you know, we're looking at those things. Also, as far as professional development, there's already been substantial work on having our faculty sign up for a variety of opportunities. We've broken the summer up into what we call two phases for professional development. The first phase is tool development for online learning instruction so that teachers who are feeling like they either need some, to learn some tools that they haven't learned yet or advance their, you know, go into an advanced kind of phase in terms of being able to use these tools. So we've had already 150 teachers in the last, like, three days sign up, which is an astounding number of people already paying attention. And they've signed up for, we have both some internal courses we're offering from 16 faculty members who we've chosen, who are leaders and, you know, in terms of this kind of curriculum implementation. But also, we're working with EdTech Teacher, which is an amazing resource that we've used over several years. They have top professional development, you know, instructors. And so the 150 teachers who have already signed up for a variety of courses on how to, you know, instruct remotely. And so Phase One is learning the tools. But Phase Two, and everybody knows that this is on pause until the planning committee basically comes out with some guidance in terms of whether we're going to have an A week and a B week or however we're going to structure it. Phase Two is pedagogy. And what is the best way to deliver instruction, given the structure that we're going to have in the fall? So by pedagogy, if you're going to have kids that are there in front of you and they're half the number of kids, obviously, there's a kind of robust intensity of instruction you can give because you only have 10 to 12 kids in your classroom. But the other 10 to 12 kids who are at home can't be sitting idle, so how do you engage them? And can you engage them by having them tune in virtually? Maybe at the secondary level? Probably not at the primary level. You know, at the secondary level, we could have kids get online and engage with their peers who are at home or certain structured group activities. But at the primary level, we may need something like Lexia or Zern, that's a self-contained kind of platform. So I just want you to know that we've, you know, we're really actively working on this. And, you know, I think our faculty is just amazing that they've already signed up and are game on to, even though I know they're exhausted and they're cranky because it's been really hard for everyone, parents and educators.
I'm cranky. We're all, any teacher who isn't cranky would be an unknown entity in our industry because it's very tiring to finish. It's a very, very hard home stretch when you're closing. And it's also deeply emotional when you're turning over your kids to summer. So for them, there's a sense of really deep emotional loss that happens and joy at the same time. So it's a really weird, unique emotion in our industry that is a very rare feeling. It's one that we own in a really special way, is a sense of loss and joy that you feel on that day. It's a really, it's a really powerful feeling. So I think, you know, they're all right on the edge of that right now. And it's always pretty emotional this week. Sorry, Daniel, I interrupted you.
Oh, that's fine. So, I mean, I just, you know, so, you know, we're going from closing out the year and what we're doing on distance learning to being, preparing ourselves for what the future will be. And I think we're, you know, we're doing a good job, but stay tuned.
Well, it gives you a little snapshot to see how our teams are working. Remember, we presented to you last week the platform we're going to use of the planning teams and the feedback teams. And then Daniel, and the different coordinators and different specialists start researching and pulling forward enough of a framework that those teams can work nimbly to like come together and like and dislike and enhance and grow the ideas, but they're not working from scratch. So I think there's a balance there around how you manage an effective team when you want to move quickly and get a lot done. So, you know, the methodology of use is that Daniel's currently beginning to put a scaffold together. And then they'll flesh it out with validation of acceptance and additional ideas that they embrace with the ownership of their own voice. And so it's a really powerful model and it's a piece we've learned that we've used in smaller versions that I think has really anchored, carrying us during this difficult time. And will improve us long term because I think it's, again, proved to us that the more voices at the table are better, never less in these kinds of things. And I think that I couldn't be more pleased with kind of the cusp of where we are. So I finished it up well. Daniel, do you have other highlights you want to add to this phase? Are you good?
That's it. Thanks.
Nice. Yeah, that's a small, huge bit, but thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot behind all of those updates. There are a lot of work. And again, kudos to our teachers for wanting to grow their practice and for getting themselves ready and prepared to do, you know, even bigger and better things with that online platform, as well as preparing to see our students in person again. So that's great. We had included something under this agenda item, which was a graphic about the cost of reopening the schools after this COVID-19 shutdown. And this comes from the Association of School Business Officials and also the School Superintendents Association. And Sarah and I received this through the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And I've seen it circulating around. Daniel's going to share it now. It's been circulating around online and, yeah, this graphic here. And when you look closely at it, I'm noticing that we have a few things in place here already. One of them would be like ensuring that at least one full-time or part-time nurse in every public school. We're very fortunate here in Westboro that we have a strong nursing staff. And so we have that in place. But there are a lot of costs to opening a school that the state right now is saying that we need to absorb. So this just kind of lays out, you know, physical items that we might need, staff, and then also extending into transportation and childcare issues for when children are in school maybe only half the time. So I don't know if Amber, you had something you wanted to add about this or Sarah?
So this is Irene. So I just wanted to say that I've also gotten this. And I've been working with facilities on the same issues and trying to prepare for, you know, do we have enough masks? Do we have enough, you know, gloves? Do we, you know, Amber has been working with us about the thermal and infrared and all that kind of thing. So it's not like we haven't seen it. We are preparing. So it's just, do we get funding for this? And there's also another memorandum by the association that's being put out that says, okay, you're sending this out, but it can't be unfunded. This has to be funded. So there's a push to get this funded. So I just want to let you know, that's what I know about everything.
Thank you, Irene. And I know right when the school shutdown happened, you were already thinking ahead about trying to secure materials and supplies and ordering. And I know there's a lot of sort of open orders out there because everyone's looking for the same materials. And so I know that we'll be working really hard to get all the things that we need for our staff and students. And so you mentioned the resolution. And so there is a resolution that I would like to bring forward to our school committee. And Daniel has a copy of it. And I went ahead and I have my copy of it and I filled in. This is going to go to the governor, the secretary of education, commissioner of education, the senate president, the house speaker. It will also be sent to our Senator James Eldridge and our three reps, Carolyn Dykema, Daniel Gregoire, and Hannah Kane. And we'll also be sending a copy to the Westboro Board of Selectmen. And I'm just going to quickly read it because it's pretty short. This resolution states, whereas if schools are to reopen this fall in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do so safely and responsibly. And whereas it is the responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation, and material expenses required to do this. And whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. And I would suggest that, you know, I sign it on behalf of all of us. So questions or discussion from school committee members about that?
I would make a motion that we submit the resolution as read to the legislators.
All right. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
I second it.
Okay, great. And so we will take a roll call vote on this. So we'll start with Sarah.
Do I, yes?
Raghu?
Raghu, yes.
Thank you. Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve?
The Red, yes.
And Vincent, yes. So thank you, school committee members. I will send this on behalf of the Westboro School Committee and I will CC all of those state senators, representatives, and send that off tomorrow morning. And I know that many, many other school committees in Massachusetts are meeting in the next couple of weeks. And I know a lot of- And I know a lot of them are discussing this and will most likely be adopting this resolution. And we are working very hard to make sure that these state mandates, things that we have to put in place, that there is funding behind it and does not fall on individual school districts to pay for this. It's going to be a huge burden for us and many other school districts that have even less and are dealing with more challenges. So thank you for that. Okay, we will move on to the high school turf update on the warrant issues. And I'd like to welcome Johanna DiCarlo joining us. I know she and Amber are going to take this presentation, so thanks.
Thank you. So I think that I will just welcome Johanna and turn it over to her. Just a reminder that you had two members who actively grounded the committee work to bring the turf project to fruition, Sarah and Steve, and Johanna and Brian, myself, and a small team of people really followed the project and monitored it. So Johanna, now, as we have turned the project over to the maintenance and ongoing work, Johanna is our athletic director, well beyond the scope of what most athletic directors do, has championed, again, always the maintenance of our facilities at a very high level. So she has been monitoring this and interacting with Chris Huntress about it. And when Johanna and I spoke about it again recently, we requested a formal documentation on his part to move the process forward to make sure that we have a record and a push to begin looking towards making sure there's accountability. And for those of you that do this work, you know that the public record of the school committee brings the attention of any company to the fact that they've been asked to submit a memo of documentation of their faults is always the first salvo of a process. And so you have Chris's letter and his photos. And I'm going to let Johanna kind of step us through the essence of what his memo encapsulates for us. And then we'll talk kind of about where we think next steps are. So Jo, I'll turn it over to you, and you want to step us through this?
Sure. Thanks, Amber. And thanks, everyone, for having me today. I don't get to see you all that often anymore. I feel like for a long time there, I was coming to school committee on a regular basis. And the last few years, about 18 months, it's been very infrequent. So it's nice to be back and nice to be working with you all again. As Amber mentioned, I believe Chris Huntress has sent along a memo. And just to give you a brief synopsis of why this is on the agenda right now is, I've noticed two separate issues with the facility since it's been redone. And please let me first put out there that it is, you know, a absolutely top-notch facility. And the feedback that we get from our community and from visiting opponents about the quality and the complex in general is just completely off the charts in a positive way. And so it's unfortunate that we're here talking about these things, but it's a necessary part sometimes of construction and of projects that some things just don't get done as well as we had hoped. And so I'm really very hopeful that we can make the repairs and make the fixes the way that they need to be done and that this facility continues to serve us for many, many years. It is getting a lot of use right now, I can tell you that much. And that's one of the reasons why I think it's important to have this public conversation about the potential repairs that will need to be done, because I think a lot of people in the community are noticing it. So the first one I'll speak about is the track surface. In some of the areas, the track surface did not wear as well as it should have in the first year or two. And there's some really prominent areas of the track facility that have worn away. And if any of you remember, I know Sarah and Steve can talk to this quite extensively, but if any of you remember, we had a really cold, wet fall in the year that we were building the facility. And, you know, I think that the track company did their best to get the track surface down, but the conditions were not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. And so I think we're starting to see the results of that over some time, where some of the, the components of the track didn't adhere as well as they had hoped or as we needed. So we did meet with Cape and Islands. Brian Callahan and I met with the owner of Cape and Islands, who did our track surfacing back in, I believe, November, and had a conversation with him about the areas that will need to be remedied and some more material put down on that surface and under better conditions and hoping that it takes a little bit better than it did. So that's, that's one issue. And we're working with Kristoff. And I have a call into Brian Callahan this week to see if we can get Kristoff back on the phone. As many of you that have been in these projects know, it's, it's not always easy to get great responses from people when they're doing repair work that they're not going to get paid for. So they're actually going to be taking quite a financial hit in order to repair the issues with the track. So we have that one, what we hope to be under control, and we hope that Cape and Islands comes through with the repairs that they offered us back in November. Brian did a great job, and I can certainly forward this to Amber. But recapping that, that meeting with Kristoff in writing, so we do have a record of that on file as well. And then the issue with the turf, now, Daniel, if you could scroll back up to where there's pictures of, yep, sort of these ones in that gap, that's perfect right there. Thank you. So in the fall of 2018, the facility was complete. In the wintertime, it's going to expand and contract and deal with our severe weather of snow and cold up here in the northeast. And so soon as the snow melted, I went out there in the spring of 2019 to sort of survey how it had managed throughout the wintertime. And I noticed, and these pictures are representative of the lower field, the main stadium field. And this is the side of the field that is closest to Charles Street. Okay, so if you were walking along that sideline. I had noticed at that point what I would say about a one-inch gap between the playing surface and the track that shouldn't have been there. So I immediately called Chris Huntress, immediately had him come down. He saw it and said right away, yep, that should not have happened. So we're going to send a team out to make that repair. So the spring of 2019, we first saw the issue. The fall of 2019, which was last fall, they came and did a repair to that sideline. You can actually see how they repaired it in those pictures where there's dark green and light green. So what they did was cut a strip out, make a strip big enough to now reach to the, to the side, and then go ahead and re-glue that piece in and gave us a continuous surface again all the way to the track edge. Said, great, thanks for the repair. We're going to keep an eye on it because, again, you just never know how the repair's going to work out. So we went through the wintertime again. It wasn't a very harsh winter, so I didn't expect there to be a lot of damage from the wintertime this year. But came back in the spring of 2020, walked the field, and the gap is even bigger than it previously was. So the fix didn't work, and in fact, it looks worse than it did a year ago. So immediately called Chris Huntress and had a representative from SprintTurf, who was our installer, come out and take a look. And he was not surprised that the fix didn't work, and he's not surprised with the issue. I believe SprintTurf has seen this happen on a few of their other fields. And the explanation that I was given from SprintTurf was that he, they think that it has something to do with the shock pad that we put underneath, and we had to put underneath when we used an alternative infill, meaning we did not use crumb rubber on these fields that we have what is deemed as a safer product. And with that safer product, you do need to put, I think it's a half-inch shock pad. You can actually see it where it's in that picture on the second row on the right-hand side, there's a little bit of a styrofoam pad you can see. That's our shock pad, and you can see how our shock pad has also pulled away from, from the original spot. So right now, what we've done is ask Chris Huntress to go ahead and file a warranty claim with our installer, which is SprintTurf. And then from there, I have a feeling that the conversation's going to go back and forth between the manufacturer of the shock pad, which is Brock, and SprintTurf to determine, is it the installation that's failing, or is it the shock pad that's failing? I believe it's going to be a case where they're going to each point fingers for a little bit, but we will get to the bottom of it, and we will figure out what is causing the field to pull away from that edge and how we can get a permanent fix in there. It was a tough conversation, I felt, for the SprintTurf guy because I was not happy, and it wasn't necessarily, you know, his fault, but he has seen this before, and he's just as frustrated as we are. So I'm really hoping that they understand that these are two pretty prominent fields in this area. They're getting a lot of looks from a lot of people in that they're going to want a resolution as quickly and as hopefully well as we want. So I think, Amber, is that sort of give you the information you need? I'm certainly available to ask some questions, you know, if anybody has questions to ask about it. But I think we are in the first steps of these warranty claims and have not necessarily heard back from those companies just yet. I believe Chris Huntress just filed one of the claims last week, and we will try and get Kristoff from Cape and Islands on the phone this week.
And the other ones on the other pages, the landscaping stuff that we have to repair, again, standard after first season, the brick settlement plaza, what was Chris's comment on that? Does he have an action plan for that on a more simple note outside of the turf?
I don't think, so again, you're dealing with all different entities. So the landscaping in the bricks will be our original contractor, David White. And I have not heard back from Chris yet, whether or not he's heard back from David White. So we'll have to push him on that a little bit, I think, next week.
So I think that one of the things I wanted to do tonight was, one, get the memo in front of the committee. I think we codify the first steps that have already been handled at the building level by Johanna and Brian really steadfastly. And I want to offer a commendation to just the work that they've provided to the management of this. This is not the stuff that you can take your eye off of or warranty passes, and you, you don't have what you need to maintain the promise you made to the community when you brought forward a project. I guess, you know, for me, I think next steps would be, I was thinking, Steve and Sarah, maybe just as the two members of that chair with, with us, that we, that we have a talk after, you know, let's close school, let's, let's let Johanna continue getting the, the track surface people in to do the work and get them on schedule. And then we need to just make sure, do we need to remobilize our committee to support Johanna and Brian for the short term as we move through this? I think that it's important we have a plan that it doesn't, you know, I think, I think we just want to have a conversation. So I figured we'd bring it forward to the committee, we have it for record, and then I need to figure out next steps with, with, I think, Steve and Sarah and the committee, just to make sure that we're monitoring. There's no one better in a dogfight than Steve. So I feel like having Mr. Doret as the chair of that committee is an essential gift, and I think he knows we'll probably have to sue these people if they don't get it right. And he's, he's good at that and welcomes the opportunity to make sure that the dollars spent in Westboro are honorable. And so, I don't know, Steve, does that feel like next first steps to you?
Yeah, I, I think that is the exact approach that, that I would suggest as well. In the meantime, Johanna continues with the warranty issues. I, I think there is a scenario that we need to sit down, list our options, find all the people that can be helpful to us and be prepared for what may be a very difficult process. But obviously, we didn't get what we wanted. We have the tools in place to, to get what we want. We just have to make sure that we don't misstep and lose any of the options that may be open to us. I think we all remember how difficult it was to deal with the, with the school gym floor issue. And the thing, the thing was, there was certain times, timing that we, that caused problems associated with our approach, which might have been more effective had we been, I guess, aware of, of the, the timing issues of when you have to do things. And so I, I think, you know, a private discussion with those options, or sit down and grade those options and then go forward. But in the meantime, this is the correct approach.
Yeah, and I do want to say while we will do what we have to do and, and, you know, to, to bring them to the table, I do think, you know, they've also, I want to honor the relationships we developed during this project. And I think Chris Huntress and the different groups, they want the product to represent them well. And Chris hasn't backed away from the discussion. I think it's a matter of sustaining his attention because there's no dollars on the table here. So, you know, I think it's, it's understandable, they're a business, and so they want to look towards new work, and especially now in these kind of crises. And so it's a matter of effort. I don't think he's ill-intentioned, and I don't think anybody else is. So we need to keep it in a good place of integrity and relationship with them and see if that'll get us where we want to go. And I think that's the best way to work forward.
I love the, I love the term sustain his attention. You know, he has been really pleasurable to work with the whole time. But I do think, as I've brought this to Amber's attention, like, it, it just is going to need a little bit heavier weight than I think just Brian and I certainly at this point. And that's why we're, we're having these discussions now, is to make sure that they understand that we do mean business and that we're not going to back off and that we are going to demand a product that, you know, we paid for and that we are, want to be very proud of.
Yeah, I have confidence that, that we will get where we need to go. I think it's been a strong committee, and I think we'll be in good shape. But we have to dig in for it and promise ourselves we deserve the product that we look towards. And when you look at how long the other turf served us at a high quality, we can't step away from this and leave something that's of a lesser quality in the place of something that we said needed to be replaced. So we'll get there. Thank you, Jo.
Another quick thing, the, the surface is playable, so we're not, you know, right now, so, so we're not losing the field right now. We're not in danger of shutting it down or same with the track. Nothing is to the point where it's going to, to need to be, you know, shut down at any, at any, at any time, any, any soon right now. So we're in good shape still.
Thank you so much. All right, so I think we can let Johanna head off to the rest of her evening. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And more to come in this.
Thank you so much. And you do have the support of the school committee behind you. And yeah, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And we will, you know, keep us updated, and, and we will be here to support you in this endeavor so we can get that fixed.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Kristen.
All right, take care. Thanks. All right. All right, so we're going to move on. I'm going to turn it over to Amber to, for us to have a discussion about kindergarten tuition from this present school year.
Thank you. So I'm watching our time, and I think that this should be a fairly tight, quick item. But, you know, again, we'll give it the time it merits for you to feel good about the steps we need to take. So you see, my memo is very clear. Like, you guys voted on the sixth on my recommendation that we had provided full enough programming to our families that a return of tuition was not merited, that the expenditures of our program well exceeded the cost of what tuition provides for coverage. It's built into the budget. We offered that memo to families as a response to inquiries we had gotten about refunds. And since then, we've monitored the number of families that have wanted to inquire with us. I've continued to think about it. Several other communities around us did take action to return some funds or offer credits. And so I am coming before you to say that regardless of everything we've done, there does remain a part of the full-day experience that families feel they missed and that we in good faith, as a relationship, value-based community, need to, to think about. My words, not theirs. I feel that as a value-based, relationship-based superintendent and district, that it merits that we return and try to put on people's shoes and understand their perspectives. I feel that I'm coming forward with a clear, creative, and thoughtful response that meets our needs financially to manage the fiscal restraints we're under while in good faith remaining in relationship with these families. I am requesting that we amend the original vote to extend $1,000 credit, which would be the percentage that would have been remaining. Irene calculated it out for me. It's actually like $1,000 or something. So I, I'm working towards $1,000 credit to families who paid the full-day kindergarten fee for this year. And this credit would be allowable to spend against their fees between now and as they travel through the Westboro Public Schools. So the $1,000 will offset each expenditure they come across against the student activity fees, community education experiences, and graduation fees. And, you know, if they call us and say, can I put this against it? If we can, we will. It's $1,000 of credit that we will make available to them. If a family moves away from Westboro prior to spending that credit, we will pay them the remaining balance due, and they need to request that prior, in writing, prior to leaving Westboro. So they can't be gone for three years and say, hey, you owe me $100 bucks. So I feel like it's a tight, respectful, and relationship-based response. Families easily spend that. You know you've got kids that are along the way. You easily spend well beyond that over fees as you travel through the district. So I feel like it's a real response. It lets us spread out the impact of the, you know, it will be a true $190,000 differential in revenue that will move throughout the district across a wider reach of impact. And Irene and I feel confident that that's something we can absorb over years of mitigation and yet gives a true credit to these families. So I would ask your support that we take this motion, and then upon your vote, we would send a letter home to families telling them that you are reconsidering, and this is what you're putting in place.
So I, I might add that it marginalizes the, the amount of revenue that, you know, we're trying to offset over the years. It might be, you know, 10 years. It might be, you know, ten years that we're trying to figure out, you know, how much we're getting in or we're not. So it's it's not like we're giving refunds all in one year. So the impact is 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 not in the same year. So it marginalizes this. So um we're just gonna, it's it's accountability in the books. And then the system to make sure that we're keeping track of everything. That's that's the part of this that's going to be taxing. But um that's my input.
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. Um I just um wouldn't say we made the initial decision early on, and I appreciate the fact that we are going back and relooking at this decision. And um you know, I received a, you know, a fair number of emails, few emails, and we heard the concerns and the um, you know, questions and opinions of the people that emailed us. So I think it's important that we we look at this. So thank you for opening it up again. Um and thank the families for giving us the time to, you know, look at the numbers, rework the budget and and make what we feel is an equitable plan. So I would make a motion to approve this memo as written.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any further discussion?
It, I just, can I speak? This is Lisa. Um I I guess I just want to say that I actually did some research after we voted the original memo and um felt like I'm really, I'm glad we're reconsidering as well. But the research was sort of giving me pause about our previous decision. And I feel good that the creative solution to it you know, can make this work. Because I think that right now, it's just, there were just so many aspects to our budget and so many aspects to what families are dealing with right now, to find a creative solution to make it work, I feel really comfortable with.
Thank you.
I guess to to speak to the, to my seconding the motion, I mean, when we discussed this before, we had so many unknowns up in the air. There's so many requests to deal with the issues that were before us a month ago, month and a half ago, that we have been uh working through them. And of course, we'll talk about it shortly relative to the budget. But we've been working through those unknowns. And with the concept of of what's fair, which is where we started with this, and an approach that allows us to be able to be fair to the the school uh attendees and be able to return the value that uh that otherwise they didn't get in this process, um you know, alleviates both the concern of what's fair as as well as protecting the town from an, you know, roughly a hundred and thou- a hundred and ninety thousand hit. Um and so, uh you know, this process, I believe, is equitable solution for all. And eventually, you know, the um uh the the parents and the students will receive the full value of this, but during their school career rather than, you know, immediately. So that's the reason why I support.
Absolutely. Thank you. And yeah, that slow impact over time, I think, is manageable for us to be able to deal with this in these challenging budgetary times. And I think it is the right thing to do for our kindergarten families. And um uh you know, when they're looking at their kindergarteners, it's hard to imagine them in middle school and high school, but they're going to want to join all kinds of clubs and sports, and it costs a lot of money. So um that credit will come in really handy um to be able to use that for um those types of fees or extended day and things like that. So we're excited that we can bring this forward. And thank you, Amber, for your reflection on this. And you're um willing to listen and reconsider and find a creative solution. So thank you.
You are welcome.
All right, we're um, I think we're ready for a roll call vote. So um we'll start with Sarah. Oh, this sorry, Raghu, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm all set. I think it's it's fair and equitable like Steve said. So I'm good.
Okay, thanks. So go ahead, Sarah.
Badu, yes.
Okay, Raghu?
Raghu, yes.
Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Uh, direct, yes.
Okay, thanks. And uh Vincent, yes. So I'm pleased that that's a five zero vote and moving that forward to our kindergarten families. All right. Um, okay, so we're gonna move on to a budget discussion and update with Amber and support with Irene.
Okay, thank you. So um this certainly has been an arena of much work on our part. I'll ask Daniel to pull up the document, and I know you have it as well. Um we have um, I'll open it up so I can see it as well. A little bigger here, and I'll step you through it. Daniel will share his screen. I can look at my own. All right. So um I followed the same trajectory of work that we utilized before. Um these are numbers that I presented in concept when I came to AFC and explained that these would be coming forward to school committee as I continued to work with the town to prepare for revenue uh decreases into FY twenty one. And I want to commend the collaboration of this committee and town committees to be responsible to the citizens of Westboro and what they need to manage, and then also what we need to manage in order to be responsive to um running programming that's going to be incredibly challenging. Um our budget certainly, you know, year over year represents a lot of incredibly thoughtful work to be ready. And so uh making these kinds of cuts is never easy. But I feel like we've approached it in a very thoughtful, reflective and and systematic way that's more surgical. And I think we've worked collaboratively with people such that they understand you know, where those cuts are coming from and why. Um and I want to just step you through what you're looking at visually. So you have our original FY twenty one budget voted by you and carried forward in the hopes that we would have arrived at town meeting in March and and voted it. You have the voted COVID cut budget one that you have then forwarded as the amended budget. And you know that at that time, we we cut, uh we'll just scroll down to my total. Uh you cut three hundred and seventy-five thousand and five thirty-five out of it uh at that time, again, a range of cuts that I think were very surgical and thoughtful and um things we could try to to manage and mitigate. The second round of cuts comes as the additional depth of revenue impact that the town has brought everybody back to the table to think about. Um the goal of coming to town meeting, hopefully, as we all keep our fingers crossed on uh June twentieth, to come in at the town level with the same pers- no more than the same percentage that we had anticipated bringing forward to town meeting. So basically, cutting the budget back to the base percentage that we had originally improved as a benchmark of the original vote that we had accepted and that you had voted as a as a percentage increase that you felt you could honor and bring forward for the budget that we needed to run the district. And so now with the mitigation of revenue loss, the target goal from the town and the approach that you as a school committee and I've taken uh has been to make cuts that that keep us down at that same percentage um when we come forward, uh the overall town percentage. Um so this second round of cuts uh again, comes in somewhat fairly surgically to look at staffing as the place where um I'm recommending that you approve a three hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eleven dollar cut that basically captures, again, some really thoughtful work we've done behind the scenes. Um it represents a one administrative, and again, I I articulated, I've spread these across the different um arenas of the units. Uh one administrative position, which we will not hire, uh you see in line three here. Um you see that again, uh then a uh another teaching position, an SLP, a speech and language pathologist, which we will not hire this year. We will be able, we will use some consulting services and some reassignment of of job staff coverage. Um then you see the cut of the seventy-six thousand nine sixty, which is elimination of three para positions. You see then the deferred hiring of one maintenance and one custodial position until January. So across the range of units, one teaching position, some para positions, custodial maintenance and admin as a response to come in and say that coming into the FY twenty one uh school year, we will have that. So I'm going to make Dan, Dan, you want to pull that back up just so we can see it? Thank you. Um so that brings me down to, scroll to the bottom, um a total budget. Uh and the additional three hundred and thirty thousand dollar cut brings us in at the fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four, five forty-nine and twenty-eight cents budget. It represents a two point nine seven percent increase to last year's budget uh and an overall reduction of seven hundred and six thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents in the combination of the two um COVID cut ones and COVID cut two. Daniel, if you want to scroll down to the bottom, they can just get a look at that. You can pick that up at lines one twenty-six to one twenty-nine. Give us a good look at, there you go. Right there is good. So um again, I think, I I think I want to commend the admin team for really thoughtfully reflecting on positions that we could creatively um manage differently for next year. There are, you know, the three of the para positions are actually an elimination in the unit because we've seen some reduction in need for for coverages. We did some consolidation of positions. Um and the others are frozen positions and deferred hiring for the one year. We'll get a look at it to see whether or not, for example, that SLP position, could we continue with contracted services? Or do we need to eventually return towards a higher? But for the FY twenty-one school year, um we can navigate these missing positions to provide strong programming while we also respond to the fiscal issues. And I would open it up for any conversation or questions you guys have.
All right, thank you um for that clear presentation and for looking again um for some reductions that we can make. Um I will open it up to anyone else who has comments or questions. Seems pretty straightforward. Lisa?
I just have a quick question. I want to make sure I understand and just get clarification. So um we've reduced two point nine seven percent in the two COVID cuts from our original approved budget that was in March. Is that what I'm seeing on the screen? And there is a, so the new number, is it more or less than the original? I- is it a a two percent? Do we know what the increase was from the original budget, from last year's budget?
It's the two point nine seven. So the two point nine seven percent represents the increase that we're, we would be bringing to town meeting.
Okay.
That does represent the percentage of cuts that represents the percentage from last year to this year that we would be bringing to town meeting.
So the, I guess then it begins the question, what is the percentage we have cut? But I I can calculate it. It's
You're the, you're the math teacher.
I got it. I got it.
I mean, you've cut, yeah, you've cut seven hundred and six thousand dollars and you had a, you had a four point, what was our original, Irene? It was four point six percent? I can't, I can't even remember. We've changed it so many times. Um and
I know, it's it's four point something, four point two nine eight or something like that. I I just, I'd have to look that up for exact.
Right. And then, and then from there, uh the first round of reduction, and then this reduction means that instead of a four and a half almost percent budget increase, you're bringing forward to the town a two point nine seven percent budget increase over your original FY twenty-one request.
Now, that answers my question. And um th- these are hard. I mean, every time we go for the cuts, it feels very challenging. And you guys have done a great job to uh spread, spread it out, which I think is really important and um and gives good reasoning, you know. It's it's imperative that we do it and uh it has to be done. So thank you for your work, you and Irene for the hard work that you did here.
Yeah, it's not easy.
No. Especially since now we're getting into cuts that involve, you know, people. That's the hardest part. Um so I need a motion to um so that we uh actually officially vote in these COVID cuts too. So a motion to uh reduce our budget by three hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eleven.
So I can make a motion to, I'll do it the opposite way.
Okay.
Bring forward a budget of fifty, oh, Daniel took the number now, fifty-four million. I wrote it down. I think it's right. Fifty-four million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Correct.
Got it. All right. Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Sarah.
Um, Julie, yes. Yeah, again, thank you for um you know, just going back and doing what you can and kind of mimicking what the town did and staying in line with um with uh with that. So um being fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Um Raghu?
Raghu, yes.
Thank you. Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve? Thank you, Steve. And um Vincent, yes. So that's a five zero vote to
Okay, I I did have a comment and I couldn't figure out how to unmute this.
Go ahead, go ahead, Steve.
But but it's not a comment that changed what we just did. I I think it's a positive comment, uh Kristen said, and it it becomes dealing with people. And that is true. But one of the points of the people that we're dealing with are people who have not been hired yet. For whereas those who've been paying attention to the news, um many schools are laying off teachers. Um many teachers. And so um you know, the school committee has managed to um to figure out a method by which we can more or less continue um you know, with a program that we have in place and and try to satisfy the town's budget a- and the taxpayer, you know, with within the parameters that we can control. And so it is a different story, even though it's a lot of money. It's still within our ability to manage the school system uh with less money than what we had proposed before. Whereas other towns, particularly Brookline, Brookline, as I recall from a news article last week, they they had laid off fifty percent of their teachers. And then they'll figure out how many they're going to hire back. So um I think we did very well as a school committee to try to satisfy the request of the of the town budgeters, if you will, uh and and still maintain as much of our program as we could. So um anyway, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Steve. And those are really important points. Um and I know that we value our staff here so much. We know that that's the success to our schools. And um we know that that's really important. And we do see all of those news reports coming out about towns in Massachusetts having to cut staff. Um another town, it might have been Randolph, and I apologize if it's the wrong town, but cutting, you know, lots of art and music teachers so that the kids will be coming back to school without a lot of specials. So we value that so much and really, you know, don't want to go there.
So thank you. And I think I, if you're comfortable having completed that vote, I'm going to move you to the second action that that I would like you to take uh under advisement uh to vote. And I do want to acknowledge that this budget, I would agree with you, the approach we took was to leverage the combination of um positions that were open, where people had left and retirements that allowed us to very creatively stage the way we strategically um took in cuts to uh allow us to maintain staff and our relationships around the people that are here doing the good work for our kids. So I'm I'm very pleased. Well, my anxiety level remains very high. I'm very pleased with where we are. Um so my second action for you, and I want to start by commending Irene's work on this to give me enough information to ask for this second action. Um at this time, I am going to request that you vote to pass over on the K warrant article, acknowledging that basically there will be no action. And that means that the two hundred thousand dollars remaining on that article will remain in free cash and help to pay for the offset of the loss of revenues that are that are occurring in the town. In combination with the cuts that we're making on both sides of the town and the school budget, the robust capacity of our well-stored reserves will allow will allow us as well to use those to be the third prong in managing this offset. And Irene has done yeoman's work, working with Paige Thomas. I just want to give a shout out to her and her incredible work. She has been tirelessly crunching numbers. And I'm so proud of, you know, the, the combination of their efforts to give us the information that, that brings me confidence that, you know, we might absorb some additional cuts of that, of that total, but that we will have opportunities to take that targeted amount and be able to roll what we hope would be the eight hundred thousand into the reserve of that kindergarten revolving account. And I will keep you updated as we move forward. But again, once the decision is made, you pass over on this article, we focus our laser work on, you know, moving the eight hundred thousand dollars into the cave revolving account. With any remaining funds, we can pull back, capture expenditures. We, we shut down, we're trying to be really strategic here. I think it's a good plan and I believe in good faith as members of the community. I would ask you to pass over the warrant article.
Okay, I, I think what needs to be said is that through those operations of balancing the budget at the end of the year, that we still believe as a school committee that we will be able to go to a full day kindergarten for everybody, correct?
We definitely will, Steve. And we remain very committed that, that following this vote, we will release a letter to the kindergarten families this year, getting a thousand dollar credit and our kindergarten families next year coming into us, that they will be arriving at a tuition-free kindergarten.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd be looking for a motion so that we can take a vote to pass over the kindergarten warrant article.
I move that we pass over the article on full-time kindergarten, free kindergarten.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. And so we'll take a roll call vote on that.
We'll have further discussions.
Sorry, discussion, sorry.
My question is I have like a comment that like, just like if we had a crystal ball, like that this conversation is actually happening, like that the full-day kindergarten is actually happening. I mean, Kristin, you were on the committee and just all the work and everything that went into it and the way it turned around, and this is how it is. No one could have predicted that this is how we would get there. But I know the kindergarten teachers and the staff is very excited about this programming. And, you know, it was a good, good initiative that we wanted to, you know, bring forward. So thank you.
I agree, I totally agree, well said.
Yeah, I'm very, very pleased that we can bring this forward to our incoming kindergarten families and all of the kindergarteners that will be rolling through our doors in many years to come. This is a huge milestone for our school system and our community. And like Sarah said, never would we think in the days of COVID nineteen budget crisis would be, be able to bring forward to free kindergarten. Kudos to Irene again and her team for keeping an eye on this budget and the money and making sure that we can bring what we knew in our hearts for many, many years was the right thing to do for our kindergartners and our families in Westboro. And I think it's a step forward in equity in our town. And I'm just so pleased, I know our teachers, our kindergarten teachers are going to be thrilled because they've been managing a lot with full day and some kids, you know, choosing the half day and coming and going. And so I'm, I'm so excited that they'll be there. And yeah, it's awesome.
I remember the chapter seventy money, sorry, Lisa, the chapter seventy money will come the next year after this pandemic. So that's, that was part of the goal too.
Yeah, huge, huge advantage for our town to be able to, you know, have every student count in the chapter seventy funding equation. Lisa, did you want to add something?
Well, I was going to mention the chapter seventy, but I also wanted to mention how proud I am that the parents who came forward. And at the time, I think I was skeptical. And why, for so many reasons, budgetary, since that is what we're charged to really review so hardly, hard to, it's such a deep way. And when it came back, the review, I really, really was so proud of the work they had done because I was instantly convinced. And then the money work, which is really our job, I felt like we really pushed forward to get it so that we really supported the town when it came to the money. And even though that feels convoluted to a lot of people, I feel like that was the right thing to do and we did it. And it's now in its completion. And for this to happen to go from the eight hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand to two hundred thousand to zero is really hard work from Irene and Amber. And I'm just so proud of, of the work that's been, that's been done on this. So kudos to all, it's great, it's just great.
And that's also a great point, Lisa. Yeah, thank you to those parents who stepped forward. Some of them had, you know, current kindergartners and sort of wanted to pay it forward to future, you know, kindergarten families. Some had preschoolers and had their eyes on, you know, their students as rising kindergartners. And again, just to reinforce that, we do welcome parent and family feedback, questions, comments. We often ask for you to help us on committees and subcommittees. And so, you know, exercise that right with the, you know, citizens' requests or reaching out to us just to start a conversation to understand more about an issue that you're concerned with. Raghu, did you want to add anything to this conversation?
No, I'm so proud that finally we were able to make it. Thanks to Irene, somehow we are able to find this. And we wanted to do this for a long time, so it's come to fruition. So I'm, I'm glad of that.
Yeah. All right, I think we're ready for our vote now. We'll get this official, so we will start with Sarah.
But Julie, yes.
Raghu?
Raghu, yes.
Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve? Thanks, Steve, yep.
Brett, yes.
All right, and Vincent, yes. A five zero vote, so proud to bring that forward. Thanks, everybody. So one of the, we're moving down the list here. We're moving on to a discussion of town meeting. And we need to prepare for town meeting. Fingers crossed that it's still going to happen on June twentieth. Just as a reminder, it's at the high school, starting at twelve noon. And so we want to spend some time thinking about what we need to do to prepare for that. So I'll turn it over to Amber, I know she has a to-do list.
Yeah, thank you, so we always have a to-do list. I just want to start with a commendation to the high school that, you know, annually, the staff up there plays a very large role in making sure the town meeting comes together by working with the town clerk. Wendy really, you know, is very focused on making sure that the town meeting is seamless. And to do that, you know, Brian does a lot of legwork, his custodial staff, Steve Macherelli. I just want to give a shout out. These people, you know, Steve Ashley, the head custodian at the high school is just, they're all such game on players. Like, you know, when we asked if we could do a socially-distanced town meeting, they went in and mapped out the gym, they mapped out the auditorium. You know, these guys are invested in what it takes to get things done. And so I just want to recognize them before we just discuss briefly tonight that I believe we have confidence that in our role to be supportive, that we can host a socially-distanced town meeting and that doing the business of the town and voting a budget so that we can kind of close the door on a piece of work and move forward with no numbers is very essential and I, I am thrilled that we're there. I think our work list is going to be, I don't really know, it's going to be very different. I, I think that my goal, and I just want to confirm with you, is going to be to prepare probably six very tight slides on, you know, the original budget we proposed, the COVID one, the COVID two cuts, a reminder to the original cuts we absorbed around busing and teacher contract that make this percentage increase incredible. And that this decrease in percentage doesn't capture even the absorbed cuts taking place with that two hundred thousand that have to fold in there as we work forward to see what remaining funds will help to offset that. So I'm thinking a very tight presentation. I think it's going to hit us here pretty quickly, you know, so I'll start prepping that. I just want to make sure because it's our last meeting. So what I'm thinking is I'll prep those slides. I'll share them to Kristin, work with them on her, push them out to the committee, make sure that they are looking good to you. I think everyone is hoping that we keep town meeting very tight, that people can focus their questions and then we get the work of the town done and we can kind of get in and get out. We will only have that, and when it comes to the K article, we'll pass over. So it's the smallest presentation list we've come forward within my career of six years here in Westboro. And well timed that we won't have so much to say. We can step forward and then work on questions. That's what I'm thinking makes sense. I just want your affirmation before I move into working on the slides. And then we'll come into town meeting ready to go.
That, that sounds good to me. And I'm glad that it is kind of the smallest presentation that you have to prepare for and that we have to prepare for because you have many other jobs and responsibilities going on right now. So I feel I'm good about that. Question, are we also going to prepare a handout or a booklet? I know in the past we've done like a summary of the year and I don't know if that's needed at this time. What are your thoughts on that, Amber?
I'm kind of not sure yet. I think, I, I think certainly you're the person that was partnering with me on that in the past. So why don't, let's leave it up in the air. I guess what I would say is what, what we're capable of. I mean, to be honest, I, I mean, we're, we're really back to the wall in the number of hours that it takes to just function at this point in terms of work. And I don't want to overpromise. I, I want to make sure that the slides we prep are thoughtful and clear. And then if we can tighten it down and we can produce a document that gives them some highlights, yes, I'm willing to do that with, with working with you. I'm just not sure on the timeline yet. So I'd like to say, if, if possible, and kind of hang in the wind on that a little bit. If you say you definitely want it, of course, we'll step up and make it happen, whatever the thoughts of the committee are.
Okay, I know back in February, when we were preparing for March town meeting, I had, you know, started making some initial edits to that document created last year. But if we want to just scale down to a one pager or whatever, I just wasn't sure. I know there'll be some protocols in place for town meeting and, you know, in terms of just people remaining safe and, you know, still have COVID nineteen around out there. So just want to make sure that if we produce anything, that it's going to be useful and important for.
Well, why don't I start by checking with Wendy on what the, the parameters are going to be? If they're going to hand out materials, I don't know if they'll pre-prep them and put them on the chairs. I, I'm not sure what they're thinking. So let's take a step one, I'll check with Wendy and see what the protocol is going to be. And if somebody wants to take that job from me, they can. If somebody wants to call Wendy and ask, I'm happy to give that job away, by the way, just because it would be great to get it done quickly. And then we can find out, and then Kristin, you and I can talk about, you know, what it was going to look like and what we would add to it to tighten it down. It's not, you know, based upon the, the big work was last year where we shifted the whole like layout. I actually think we could pull it together pretty quickly. And if it's beneficial, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. It's just a matter of like cranking on the work. So let's get the answer to that first question and then we can, in email, keep you updated on whether or not we're going to do that and then moving forward to town meeting. And then I would think that we would need to, typically I would do the presentation of the slides and then, you know, we field questions based upon what, what, what comes up. And then typically, any of you would help to answer those questions. Should be pretty streamlined.
Okay, thanks. I'll, I'll take on the responsibility, I'll call Wendy and find out if they're planning on having printed, printed materials at town meeting and just get a little sense of the, you know, protocols they might put in place for that.
And if they need help in order to lay those out on chairs and stuff, we certainly could access some help.
Okay, and all right, and we can work together on the slides. Does anyone else they want to add about preparation for town meeting?
We need to book our meeting the day of, so we usually meet before. And I would assume we would want to keep that protocol in place where we meet an hour before town meeting. So I, I would have, I would have Andrea book us for a meeting and post it. And we would do our regular routine of meeting in the, the library and then heading down. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, so we'd meet at eleven and then it's a twelve noon start. So feel free, anyone, to bring your lunch. And, you know, then we'll be ready, ready to go. Did you want to add anything?
There was one thing that I was thinking about, which was the bus transportation number. We did give our consultants a report and therefore maybe I could either throw together, just make sure that we have the summary ready because initially we had talked about, you know, back in March, talking about the industry and why our transportation costs were what they became, you know, what they're become. So it might be interesting to have a synopsis of, you know, that why.
Do you envision that sort of like as a backup slide in case there's questions or? Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I wondered if it's, is it, is it just a backup slide? Or do we want some, some other information? Because it feels like that's the huge, that, that's one of the huge increases that potentially has questions, that people who have not been paying attention along the way would not really have a sense.
Are you hearing chatter, Lisa, on this or?
No, no, it's more that often when we get to town meeting, big issues that show up in the budget, which that would be one of them. Even though we've been talking about it all along, there are people who just attend town meeting and they may not be aware of that piece of it. And it feels like a, and one of the, you know, question.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. I mean, I think I, I can certainly incorporate that into, I do think there's a set of tight synopsis slides of where the original voted budget was and what the big impact pieces were there. And so usually I go back to the, you know, I think we've done like, like six or seven slide presentations of different combinations. And so I usually pull from those and I'll create a new presentation and, you know, go from there. I mean, again, I think it's, we're, we'll have to pull it together. I'll share it to you guys and then, well, you know, a pretty quick turnaround. I mean, that means I've got to have that to them by whatever it is, Friday the nineteenth. And Mark is really good about taking it late, so, or not Mark. I'm totally blanking on the guy's name now, sorry, I apologize. So they take the presentation slide very late. I just, I have to get them done, so we'll be, we'll be good. We're just going to come up.
That is Mark, that is Mark.
And I'm like, I think I said the wrong name, sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 you got it right.
All right, so.
We'll, we'll get that done and we'll have a presentation ready. And I know that, you know, the goal at town meeting is to first get people there and then to step people through the presentations quickly and keep it safe and keep it going and, and get our business done for our town, so.
Yep, definitely.
Great, all right, happy to work with you on that, Amber. We're going to move on to, we have to take a vote on the Student Opportunity Act and the plan that Daniel shared with us last, our last meeting. So Daniel, I don't know if you want to say anything else about that? I didn't know if it came to us in a draft form and if any changes have, have taken place.
Hi, so no changes have taken place. I can share this with you if you want. I can, you know, or just give you the context. Do you want me to put it up on the screen or not?
I don't think you have to. It was shared, you shared it with us at our last meeting and it is a requirement of the state. Yeah, so.
Yeah, and I'm confident that, you know, it, it meshes with our long-range goals. There are priority items for us. It's in compliance with the requirements for the Student Opportunity Act. And so, yeah, I would ask that you support the plan as presented and I will send it off to the state.
Thank you. So we need a motion to accept the Student Opportunity Plan.
I'll make a motion to accept the Student Opportunity Plan as written.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Raghu. Any further discussion on this?
Nope, except for just to thank Daniel for working that into the schedule, getting it done. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll take a roll call vote, we'll start with Sarah.
Julie, yes.
Raghu?
Raghu, yes.
Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve?
Uh, direct, yes.
And Vincent, yes, so that's five zero. And Vincent, yes. So that's five zero to support that Student Opportunity Plan. And I know Daniel sent that off to the state. Get that done. Okay. So we are moving to our superintendent's evaluation. It's a traditional end of the year piece of business and, um, I'm going to turn this part of the meeting over to Sarah because up until a couple of hours ago, she was chair. And, um, she has seen Amber through this whole process all year.
Thank you. Um, yeah. So I, we started this process while we're ongoing all year with Amber's goals. At the beginning of the year and then the updates, but yes, about a month ago, we officially, um, entered into evaluation time. And so the school committee annually reviews the superintendent using the guidelines from the Massachusetts Model System for Educator Evaluation. There are four standards, instructional leadership, management operations, family and community engagement and professional culture. Each standard has a set of indicators based on specific knowledge, skills and performance. Amber aligned her personal goals to the standards this year. So they were used as elements of the, sorry, they were used as elements of actions or behaviors related to each of those indicators. The performance descriptors used for the evaluation are unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. So each school committee member completed an individual review. Um, and they were compiled into a final review, um, that was shared with Amber, uh, prior to the meeting. So thank you everyone for getting that done, um, on my timeline. I appreciate that. So I will, um, read through the results, if you will. Um, in instructional leadership, Amber was given an exemplary performance rating. In management and operations, Amber was given an exemplary performance rating. In family and community engagement, Amber was given a proficient rating. And in professional culture, Amber was given an exemplary rating. So overall for the year, Amber, um, has a chain and exemplary rating. So I don't know if this is weirder on a Google hangout call or weirder in person. I don't know. It's always an odd, odd.
It's always weird period. Right. Exactly. Yes.
So anyway, we, um, so in reading through the comments, uh, submitted by myself and the other members of the committee, Westboro is very fortunate to have such a well-rounded, capable leader, especially during the most unusual past few months. So I think, um, usually traditionally everyone's kind of giving a little comment. So I will turn it back over to the committee if anyone wants to, uh, to make a comment. Everyone want to go in any order or?
Um, Yeah.
You don't, you don't have to comment either. Don't feel, don't feel pressured.
Might want to.
I know. I, I just want to be, you know, clear that, you know, it's, I received your written notes as well. So thank you. And I certainly that directed feedbacks will be helpful, but I know that you want to make some comments around the direction of our work and things. So that would be good too. So.
Yeah, thank you. Kristin, you're not muted. You go.
Sure. Thanks, Sarah. Um, so yeah, I just want to, um, acknowledge that, you know, at, at any point, being a superintendent is a challenging job. And so the last 10 weeks I know have proven to be probably the most stressful and challenging of your career, Amber. And I know this isn't what you trained for. And you can't even sort of rely on past experiences to inform how to move forward. Like we're all in new territory. But with all the challenges, um, we've risen to respond to each new issue with a team centered approach. And they know that came up even today. I see it in all the work that you do initiatives that you want to bring forward. They are always team centered and there are times that you do have to make decisions and you step in as a leader and do that, but you do that by gathering information from stakeholders and really taking into account, um, everyone who's involved or who's going to be impacted by these decisions. And I've heard this analogy many times recently, and I think it definitely applies to the work that, that you and your team have been engaged in. The idea that you're flying an airplane while building it. I want to recognize that a lot of the work you've been doing is exhausting. And, um, but you don't give up and you don't give in and your work ethic and your dedication is commendable. And I think what shines through and what I can see, um, in you is that you have a lot of pride and gratitude as you witness and support, um, your staff and students rising with stamina and resilience to this challenge and any sort of challenge that faces us during the school year. So Amber, I feel like you're a model for our faculty and students and you set the tone by holding yourself in the district to have very high standards. And, but you also support everyone in reaching them. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Raghu, do you have a?
No, I, uh, we, we are fortunate to have Amber as a superintendent. And she pulled our metal, um, past, past, like, couple of months. So there's nothing more to say.
Thank you Raghu.
Raghu did trial by fire there.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Um, Steve, did you have anything?
Uh, yeah. Wait a minute. Am I unmuted?
No, you're muted. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Um, I actually voted, uh, um, and gave you a score higher than what the combined group gave you. But anyway, and you'll see how and why I did that with a discreet comments, but I agree with everything that was said. Trial by fire for sure is, um, I guess the best test of anybody's metal. And certainly this year has tested you, the staff, the teachers, everybody. And, um, you know, I, I think all told, at least based on my own experience with, people that I know in other school systems, I think we did as, as, uh, as a whole, much better than the average uh, school system during the pandemic. And I think although it's unfortunate that that's the way it had to be, I still think it, it happened as a result of the ability of everybody to, to, to keep their head down and to continue to work. Uh, and the fact that it's a group effort, I think, um, you know, plays very well to your strengths. Uh, and ability to do everything that Raghu said and that, uh, Kristin said as well. So with that, uh, hopefully you enjoy my comments.
Thank you, Steve.
Lisa?
So, um, you know, I, I realize that no one really trains first for crisis and, you know, unexpected, but I really believe that your skills were made for this period. I believe that you have just shown such leadership and ability to work in an unforeseen time. And that if there was anyone needed more than right now, it would be you. I am so touched and moved by, uh, observing you in action in the last three months. I mean, I've worked with you for the last, you know, over three years and I've seen, it's not just exemplary, it's more about, uh, that you care so deeply and you work so hard. And your skillset was made to create teams that function at such high levels, high expectations that meet your own, that, that meet, meet where you are. And, um, you pull people up and you show them their best, you show them what they're able to do and they bring their best to the front. And I see that in our leadership team. I see it in our staff. I see it in us as a committee and, uh, I, you know, I feel a little emotional here because I feel like, um, this period of time, uh, there's no question that when people look back and when I look back on this time, I will know that the success of what has happened is because of your leadership and your ability. And we couldn't be where we are right now. Uh, you know, I, 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 I thank, I thank you and I feel so grateful. And on a daily basis, I think about how extraordinary this period of time has been. And, you know, you sort of are creating a, a legacy. And typically we don't stop to think about that. But that's where we are. That you're really have made an impact on Westboro Public Schools that will be remembered forever. I am convinced.
That's very kind Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
A couple more things and then you can, uh, you can have the floor, go home and have a glass of wine or something. On the agenda.
We have executive signed.
Um, so I think your positive, like everyone said, your positive attitude and resilience have shown through, um, Westboro's fortunate to have your strong leadership and thoughtful decision-making, um, during a time of many unknowns. Um, you're quick to credit your colleagues and leadership team for the district successes. Daniel and Irene using their knowledge bases and skillsets to, um, complement your decision-making, to incorporate the right programs, curriculums and initiatives, Westboro, while, um, keeping an eye on the budget and being fiscally responsible to the town. Um, I just, I literally got a text from a staff member that wanted me to add something. So I'm going to do it. That you had said in one of your emails that you want to feel good about how we handled this and that really helped them push through the last few months. So.
Oh, thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
Um, I know this is Amber's review, but I do have to, I'd be remiss in not thanking Daniel, Lisa and Kristin and the original Alternative Learning Day team.
Yeah.
With their work on the platform as a response to the delayed opening and then to Lisa's smart thinking.
Yeah.
She encouraged us to keep that with the, um, you never know mindset. So Amber, you get the credit for, um, you know, going outside your own comfort zone with that. And.
Yeah, I voted, voted to keep it.
Yeah, facilitating that, that thinking out of the box. So, thank you. I think, but I think like you said, some directives, um, the long range strategic plan is still sitting on your white marker board. So that's an important, such an important tool for the, the district. Um, so it needs to be prioritized, obviously as time allows. And I know you know that. Um, and communication is on ongoing work. Um, you know, staff and families and the community really looks forward to hearing from you. And as you're readily available to many, it does, um, pull on your time and capacity. So, um, striking a balance there is important. Especially for your own stamina and time management, which I know you do very well, but as you know, there's not enough hours in the day for, for all that work. So, um, you know, again, thank you for being such a strong leader for our district. And we're working on your contract. We've got a new, we've got a new multi-year contract in the works. Um, so once we get that taken up, we will, um, you know, announce that to the community too. So.
Thank you. No, that's good. It was a reasonable delay. Um, so thank you. I find it really hard to, to like take compliments. Um, I much more prefer to focus on the goals. So I love that my exiting chair gave the shout out to my target goals, which I love. We will get the strategic plan done and, and I feel incredibly energized by the work that's on the table. And we will come out on the other side of, of this challenge and be able to pick that work up. And guess what? If we're stuck with this as the challenge, we're going to pick up that work anyway, because you can't live in, in the limbo of, of this kind of, um, treading water and survival. We have to also do the best we can with, with each day. And so and I think as well, the, the call out for, for my voice in the community, for my writing and my communication with families and staff. I mean, I, I sometimes I actually had supervision today with Peter Gelnitz and I, I was asking him some questions and we were talking about communication and I said, you know, I kind of forget that people might want to hear from me. I don't, I don't tend to think of it that way. I'm a real kind of on the ground girl around the way I live a lot of this work and the, the sense that people need to hear my voice, I can often forget. And I'm, you know, I continue to try to step up and, and make sure that I meet that call to, to communicate without inundating people. So I, I think that's a great continual goal for me. I would say it makes me most happy to acknowledge to all of you that I love that when you talk about me, you add we, and it adds my team in and almost every, you almost are afraid to say just me because you know, my strong essential feeling about it is that, um, this work, I'm nothing without the team. I mean, I'm such a small piece of the package of this work. I mean, I couldn't be more proud of just the energy and the A game that has been brought by the Westboro Public Schools across the reach of this district. And I also know and acknowledge I play a piece of that and I do, I do work hard to contribute and um, I feel pride in the pieces of this vision that are mine. And there are small slices that I keep like close to my heart that I know are like my little piece of the strategic plan or my little thing that I'm passionate about that I want to, you know, look at someday when I drive around Westboro retired and, and, uh, have time on my hands and I'll be like, oh, look at that W. I love that W. So I, and Daniel laughs at me because he knows I love that W redesign. Cause I'm like, we can't have the Wisconsin W. You know, there's things like that that I find joy in that are small and, and personal to me, but the large mission of this work is owned by the team. I mean, you know, I, I just can't even say enough about the seamlessness of how we team being really gratifying to me. And I think that we're all exercising incredibly new challenging grit to, to step up and find our way. And so I find that work energizing and depleting both at once. I mean, it's exhausting. We often say each day, I am exhausted by the work right now, but also incredibly focused on the importance of it and, and the incredible need for us to do it well. So, um, I thank you for the evaluation and, um, and for the opportunity to sign a return contract with you. Um, I absolutely love this town, not just because I live in it. I've served every community I've ever worked in with, with love and passion. Cause I love this work. I think it's the most important work there is. But it, it does hit a little close to home to be able to, to serve a community and to, and my neighbors in, in a way that makes me happy. So, um, I, I am grateful to have the opportunity to continue to serve you. And I feel very fortunate that you guys are a seamless, very supportive school committee. There are communities that implode around times of stress and instead Westboro has become more, uh, connected and, and focused on common goals. And I think you guys have helped to steer us through this budget crisis and this, this crisis in general really seamlessly. And I, I thank you for that because you haven't been a part of any pressure. You've been a part of ongoing solutions. And I think that's commends a strong team. So, um, thank you. And I think, uh, I look forward to next year. We'll be ready. So, thank you. And I think, you know, the last piece we have to do, and then we can steam into executive session and like as a new chairperson, you have us on track, which is very exciting. We have to do the ABC fourth quarter update. Do you want me to steam into that Kristin and just keep us moving?
Um, yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
So the annual record that you need to make sure that we record is that the, the ABC responsibility, uh, and I'm a member of that board. I actually think I'll probably end up rotating into chair of that board next year. Is a really dynamic group and I, I respect the quality of programming that ABC provides to our collaborative. They are facing fiscal crisis. And so right now they are still innovating their budget frameworks to decide what approach they want to take. Um, at the same time, they're also embracing some incredibly dynamic leadership innovation related to equity. And I think it's going to be a defining feature of our collaborative and that is very exciting to me. So what I want to have on record tonight around ABC is a recognition of Kathy Cummings as the director and her vision for equity and cultural proficiencies and empowerment, uh, of all. And she's passionate about it and actually shifting the leadership structure of ABC to support that vision and mission in ways that I find incredible. I, you know, welcome the opportunity to serve on the board next year and support her in that. And I believe the budget will become secondary to the larger purpose of their vision being really strong. So they'll survive the budget issues. I, I'll bring forward in the fall, the budget that they finalize. But, um, that will serve as my last quarterly report for the year for ABC. And I'll keep you updated on what they do because it's going to be pretty cool.
Yeah, thank you. Um, great. I know that they are struggling as, as many, you know, small, that, you know, you just kind of think of them as like a small school system in themselves. So.
Yeah. And all the pieces of their budget flow from us and, and the different pieces as well as transportation is a giant arm. And they took a lot of the hits on transportation as well. And a lot of districts did pay them, but there's just a lot of, lot of uncertainty right now. So, um, we'll, we'll, I, I have faith that they'll weather it. And, and I think we have a good board supporting them. So the, the last piece to keep you moving forward is just an update on, um, I think it's important as we continue to plan forward for managing work. As I just said, like the year ahead will be, uh, we embrace with the opportunity to have it well organized and run seamlessly and safely for everyone in our community and for our students. And a piece of our mission as a committee will be that there are parts of our work that need to be returned to. So Kristin and, and team, I'm just putting this document to you to remind you of the pieces that we will return to that are annually regular reports that we have. And I just want to make sure that I've shared into the record so that we have it to remember. And you guys can think about it. The annual reports and updates that we set aside this year because nothing gets done without compromises. And I, I just want to make sure that we close out the year, that we're not, um, stepping back and pretending that these are a forgotten, uh, value. These, these reports keep us on point and, and help us drive the mission of the strategic plan. So I just want to acknowledge and look at that document briefly with you and I can step you through it. So I just want to acknowledge and look at that document briefly with you and I can step you through it. Daniel, I linked it if you can share it and I'll just take a couple minutes. And, and then the, the note will be that, that Kristin and I will begin to build the calendar for next year and, and then we'll fold these in and, and get a return to them and try to figure out strategically where, where we are with them. So in March, you would have received an HR report with a new HR director in the last year and a half coming to the sec close of second year. And we look substantially different than we did with that before the creation of this position. And I, I think getting an update on the evolution of that department, given the investment that the community made in that position. I'll want to have Suzanne in front of you in the fall, I believe, to really give you an update on implementation of changes in that department and the positive impacts both to staff and to community. We don't want to get too far afield from the bus app and this new company will have to give it to us as well. And so I just want to hold on to the pieces we were doing to provide quality communication to, to parents. So Lisa, we'll have to pick up the ball on that work with Irene and just make sure that our implementation's in a good place. We were holding ongoing strategic plan coffee meetings around the completed draft. So you can see how far that timetable is off. Again, the recovery plan for that's mapped out. I'm not concerned. And you can have confidence it'll be in front of you in the fall in a good place. And typically, it's interesting to see that we would have debriefed with John Arnold and we haven't even had town meetings. So just a piece that, that I put there so you can remember the trajectory, the work we usually have. You would have had reports from the wellness department, foreign language and science and math, which are in cycle review completions with new programming. So I'm going to want to not lose touch with closing those out. SEL program review, they've been very active in driving forward a mission this year that rescued us on so many levels how they stepped up. And you think about the new initiatives that we folded in with the, with the piloting of all that new SEL curriculum. And actually, it's steamed forward with a lot of resilience, as did the wellness department that has been a gigantic arm of our SEL programming. And I just want to give a shout out to that is, you know, no ball was dropped there is, is really the point. But I think a finalization of that program report will be important at some date. We'll figure out how to do those as kind of a consolidated update. You would have gotten a report on ChartWells. It's important we stay tuned with that large organization and the food they provide. And certainly I want to give a shout out to the fact that they have stepped up on a huge level to help and provide support during the, the food and security work that the town has been managing. And then you would have had school updates and highlights from your principals that would have brought to you a completion of the work that they had accomplished this year. The bus report, we cannot drop the ball on the implementation of our new bus company. So, you know, it's going to be challenging for them. They're going to be coming to us while our own practices are going to be a little bit different. So I think we're going to have to really stay tight. And Irene and Lisa, I think that committee is going to have to really remain in place to onboard them all year long. And we will want to report on their first year of implementation at different stages of the year. And then typically, we would have had a meeting with Chip. And Chip was actually one of my goals, his department, and looking at the student officer this year. And it really got pushed just to hardcore back burner when, when we moved into this. And it's going to have to be pulled forward. Typically, the other pieces, the social studies program review report, student handbook approvals. And then you would have received two reports on very important initiatives, the literacy committee report and the inclusive practices update. So Daniel and I are doing recovery work on the literacy committee work, the inclusive practices work. We moved good pieces of it forward, but we'll need to, to pick up the ball on that. A lot of that, we're just going to roll into year one of strategic plan delineation when we do retreat work. Capital requests, student handbooks, all of that stuff's a part of what we do to finish. You get the game schedule usually. We have no idea what the game schedule will be. So these are all pieces of work that have to then be picked up, modified, responded to, and planned for. So this is how we keep ourselves on point. So I'll, I'll work with Kristin on this. And Kristin, you know, you and I will talk this through. I mean, typically, I plug all this in and then we update it as we go. So I just think before we close out this year, it's important to acknowledge that these are the things that the balls will have to pick up as we get our feedback under us. All right?
All right, definitely. And, you know, I do think that it was the right decision to hold off on a lot of these reports. We could not ask our staff to, you know, pause any kind of work they were doing to prepare a report like this. Because first of all, it's incomplete because they really weren't bringing forward all of the work that they had planned for the school year, being in person with students. And they're busy trying to help support their staff and moving to this distance learning and getting things online. So it was the right decision to hold off on those. And yeah, we look forward to folding all that into next year's school committee calendar.
Definitely, so.
Yeah, and just as a reminder for everyone, this is our last meeting of the 2019-2020 school year. But we do anticipate having some meetings over the summer. And so we will, you know, obviously follow the guidelines for open meeting law and post those meetings and let people know where, when they're happening. Most likely, they still will be on a virtual platform, which actually makes it easier for us to meet over the summer because we could be in our various locations if we're, you know, visiting or doing other things this summer and still be able to meet. So I'll be in close contact with you Amber and with the school committee to make sure we can schedule some meetings to stay on top of the plans that you and Daniel are putting together and the budget impacts that, you know, I know Irene's managing.
Definitely.
All right, thank you, everyone. So I need a motion to move into executive session.
I'm ready. I got your back. We vote to, going to vote to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22G, Two, Purpose Seven, to review and approve executive session minutes.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you Steve. And we'll take a roll call vote. We'll start with Sarah.
July, yes.
Raghu?
Raghu, yes.
Lisa?
Edinburgh, yes.
Steve?
Dorit, yes.
And Vincent, yes. So we are moving into executive session. Thank you, everybody.